Okay, thanks everybody. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thanks again for coming out. We'll start with item number one. McCoy called me. He's gonna be just a couple minutes later. We'll start with item number one, approve the agenda, the additions, additions or corrections. Do you have anything else besides what you have on here?
No.
Dan, anything?
No.
Addition, additions, anything? Doug?
I think we wanted to order the Historical Society to...
Under whole business. F2. Okay. And then we've got an addition under J3 in the Engineers' Report. We're gonna get an update on the construction progress third quarter and fifth. And we're gonna have a pay request for SO contracting for 2017 Street Project for $592,773.95. We'll add that to J3. And Brad will give us a update on that.
Yep.
I believe that was it. Anything else? Entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended. I'll make that motion. McCoy, you have a second?
I'll second it.
Thanks, Tony. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pull the same side. Motion carries unanimously. Onto number two, the consent agenda.
I wanna pull under E, number three.
So move to E3.
Yep.
And we'll just put that down under new business. G2. That's G2. Okay, anything else?
I just, one question on E. Why, why do they seem like it's all at once from July, August, September?
No, because some of them didn't get to me until I started asking for them.
Okay. I was just wondering why. She seemed like a whole lot all of a sudden at once.
Yeah.
That was all I was wondering.
Yeah.
I have, I have one other question too. On the minutes for the city council at least. I know quite some time ago, we talked about this and we made a motion. And on the top of these, there would, to see full detail or something like that. Reversed to the film or the... It used to be on there. It was on there until April. It hadn't been on since. There was controversy on different ways it had been written up and tell people that they can see the full thing on the video.
Thanks, Doug. Anything else? Okay, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Dan. You have a second? So, McCoy, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pull the same side. Motion carries unanimously. Uh, onto B, visitors to the council for presentation for police reserves. Chief Burgess.
Yeah, I did not so. Um, earlier this summer, our investigator, Jesse Redding, who is also our reserve coordinator, he adds up everything. But he came to me and he said, you know, we should probably recognize a couple of our reserves who have put in a lot of time with us and a lot of service for us. Said, hey, that's a good idea. Let's get it done. So Jesse took to getting them some plaques made. And we're gonna present them today to Scott Larson and Richard Hannenberg. For 20 years on the reserve program, helping us out in the city. So, great job. Come on up.
Scott Larson? Richard?
Congratulations to the two of you. Thank you for all your help throughout the years. You've done a lot.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Picture. She's like a, besides her partner.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Good job, guys. Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
Here?
Yeah. Come back here, Richard.
Coming up here.
Who wants to be blocked?
Good, you good?
Bring him with him Monday.
Okay.
Thanks, guys. Get it out.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay, on the public forum, I don't have any cards. Okay, committee report, number one, EDA. You have something on that for the roadside?
Yes, so Stephanie, um, did she talk to the EDA about this specifically? So part of the, what came out of the comp plan was improving wayfinding and signage. And so this doesn't include a sign at this time. It could in the future. But it is setting up kind of that gateway into Casson at the intersection of 14 and 57. So when people are coming from the east and exiting, that Minda would potentially participate in playing for the planting to create a buffer there that would kind of hide some of those vehicles that are just sitting up on the hill opposite the exit. We would need to provide the labor to put the plants in, but we'll be asking Minda to pay for those plantings. Yep.
Basically, Casson property, sale of, come around that or something that would...
Be the worst.
Yep.
Just there, and there's a grant opportunity Stephanie found that's available for that. So if we could apply for it, see if we get it.
Yep, exactly.
If we get it, then we can put something there.
Right, exactly.
So it'd be actually be in Minda right away?
Exactly, yep, yep.
Any other questions for Teresa?
Will that, if it does go in, will that fall into their jurisdiction for maintenance on it then?
Um, we would maintain the actual planting bed. They would still mow their ditch and mow their other mowable areas. But we're also looking at what kind of mulch can we put in to keep weeds from growing in and that kind of thing.
So if we plant a tree, then we'll, we'll have to trim the tree or... Right.
Right. But it doesn't mean we have to take over...
Oh, right.
Yeah, we don't have to take over mowing the ditch and all that.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, entertain a motion to approve the resolution for the application of the grant.
I'll make that.
Thanks, Doug. Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Dan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pull the same side. Motion carries unanimously, Linda. Number two, the CETA contract.
It's a pre-annual, the annual contract that we have with CETA to provide us with our EDA coordinator. The evaluations that I have seen for Stephanie have been positive. And I don't know if Chris and Dan want to speak specifically to the, to the contract, but I think it's been working well for us.
I think it's working better now.
Yeah.
It's not slight on the previous person assigned here. But Stephanie's, I think, doing a fantastic job. She's found some pots of money for us here recently that we did no route there. So I'd definitely say she's paying for herself what, just the grants that we have the opportunities for. So I think it's working really well and she's really, yeah, I think she's really, uh, she's representing us well when she's out talking to people. And she's got the website. It's updated now. We have property listings on there for any property in Casson. If you own commercial property to sell or to rent, we can do a listing on there. She's doing some good stuff from the city. Good recommendation on that.
She's really thorough and it helps that she's also worked with Dodge County EDA. So she's got a good outline of the whole area. She really brings a lot to it. She's found out different things that we've gotta change.
So any specific questions? This is in our proposed budget, so.
I just see bucks being brought up there. Have we been getting a bang for the buck there at all or?
That's, that's it.
Oh, that's done.
That's done.
Yeah, that's done. I can make that, I can remove that from the line.
I just mentioned in there, I haven't heard nothing about it for a while.
We use the bucks information in your comprehensive plan, for comprehensive planning, but then we terminated our agreement with them.
And the information was used in some of the grant applications.
Yep, yep.
Any other questions? Hope not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the 2019.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Dan. You have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pull the same side. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Old Business, F1, health insurance clarification.
The highlighted parts, I started reading the fine print on here. And I, it was a, it was a... I didn't know this, so I thought, well, if I didn't know it, you guys probably didn't know it, that the insurance is a two-year term. So we have to participate with the Public Employees Insurance Program for two years. That's what the, the contract and going with them entitles. And if we didn't, there is a penalty and we can't rejoin for another two years after that. So I just wanted you guys to be aware that it is a two-year commitment to them. But we did look back at 10 years of premiums or increases. And what was it? Never more than 4%. Usually it was zero to two, three. But I just wanna make sure you guys know it's a two-year commitment.
No, it makes sense.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, no, it makes sense. What risk is there with two years? The risk is the second year, the premium could go up 20 or 30%. It was gonna go up 30% for us this year and we knocked hundreds of thousands off if I go on this. So to me, when I, my packet, yeah, you never like to have a two-year term if you don't have to, but what's our risk? We were already gonna be 30% higher than where we are today if we didn't go with this, so.
There is nothing in stone what they could raise it next year, you mean with their...
There is nothing in stone. And there was nothing in stone ever before either. It all depended on our, our rating. And we were not rating very well.
If the premiums increase more than 50%, you can, there's...
Yeah, that, that's a big increase. So if they went up more than 50%, they let us out, you know?
Their attorney did a good job writing that for them.
So I just thought you should know and you should approve that.
Okay, thank you.
It is a two-year contract.
Any other questions on that?
Well, I mean, all you can do is look back. Look back at the two, three years.
Well, in your first year with a new insurance company, they're really taking a risk on you anyway because they don't know, I mean, they go back in your usage, but they don't know what's gonna happen this year to any of the employees either.
Any other questions? I entertain a motion to approve that plan with a two-year commitment.
So I'll make that.
Thank you. You have a second?
I'll second it.
Thanks, Tony. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pull the same side. Motion carries unanimously. Number two, this is that full application.
Right, so we had already been approved to a sign. This is actually our, like, pre-application to find out if we ranked high enough to go forward with a full application. So this was already approved for signature when Karen and Buffy came to visit with us. These are the final numbers after they took into account all that we had available, the number of units that were eligible, so we have, and their cost to administer this. So it comes to $888,000.
And we don't have a motion on this. We already...
No, no.
An update.
Why not just be final, final, well, you see the application number.
Perfect.
The application.
Okay, any questions? All right, we'll move on. Thanks, Teresa. Onto new business, number one, campus 2018 municipal election results.
No, we added...
We added the...
We added three there, under whole business.
Oh, under whole business, yeah, I'm sorry. I forgot to write that to you. Okay.
I'll start with, I guess what I wanna say, was brought to my attention that I don't think I was quite up to speed on the last meeting of all the changes that were done. I assumed that the Historical Society Board was involved with these changes, whatever else, and from understand the plaque is not kind of underneath guidelines of what else is throughout the county, the same style of plaque and everything else. Can you bring me up to speed somebody on this thing to find out exactly what this is?
From the last meeting, Don was here. We agreed to do some changing to increase the size of the lettering so it could be read from the roadway. To increase the size of the lettering, we had to cut the number of letters down in the sign to make it all fit. We included more information on the backside of it, so it actually has more information than it did before. And Don approved that and the city council approved it and we moved forward.
I wanna know about the sign.
Yes, that's what I'm talking about, the sign.
What's the color?
The color? I think it was blue and white.
Uh, blue and aluminum.
And it was in the last discussion.
Which doesn't match any of the other historical markers throughout the county.
But this is a city historical marker. City Casson, blue and white, blue and silver.
City Casson, the green city shop. I don't think color would matter. It would be more, it would be contiguous throughout the county for a historical marker. When I say that, I didn't get to see these changes. I guess I assumed, I mean, Don, I'm not, I'm not gonna speak for you, but I'm gonna say I don't under, I don't, I've been on the board. I don't believe that Don has the right to go and approve changes without the board's knowledge. But this is, I guess I don't see that this was discussed appropriately between both sides.
But this is city property. This isn't a county historical site. This is city property. Is that true?
Yeah, but it's not the KM school banner sign out there either.
No, but pretty much the city throughout, the city water tower, the city, anything with the signs is blue and white, pretty much. Is the city welcome sign out here blue?
No, because Casson is in blue.
Yes.
Brand blue.
I didn't see an issue with that.
Well, the way I look at it is that you guys made changes in the historical board, didn't get to see those changes.
Actually, Don asked for changes after it was approved and we agreed to make those changes to fit what Don wanted. And he's with the Historical Society, correct?
Yes.
Do you want me to address this, the issue?
Yes, if you would, Don.
Well, when this was discussed the last time...
Don, you step up, you'll just take your name and...
Hi.
Thank you.
Well, Westfall Executive Director of the Dodge County Historical Society, I live in Casson. Uh, what I wanted to get at here is that the last time I was here, I was under the false assumption that you had all seen the text that the Dodge County Historical Society approved for this sign. Now subsequently, it's come to my attention and the rest of the board, but that may not have been the case. And that you may not have had a chance to really study that text versus the one that was presented at the last meeting. And so that's why we wanted to revisit this so that we could actually compare these two texts side by side. And actually have to give you a chance to see what DCHS had intended for you to vote on. I, my assumption was that because that one wasn't present, that you had decided to reject that and just go with this other text. And so seeing the course of action, I just decided to go with that myself. But I think under the circumstances, it would be good to go back, revisit this whole issue and make sure that you had a chance to really study DCHS proposal for the text in addition to the one that was developed within the city administration. So I hope that clarifies it a little bit.
Yeah, I haven't seen a change.
Wasn't that included in our last packet, the text? You just handed out a sign. We saw those and we heard what the other... That was all in our last meeting when we approved.
Don handed us some pictures of some historical markers that are developed county. I got the last meetings in front of me. I, I don't see anything. I tried to find it earlier today of the new proposed sign. So, I mean...
Now, we did email the version of the text that had been approved by the Dodge County Historical Society Board of Directors. But as I think I may have, subsequently, we've come to learn that some of you, all of you, may not really have seen it. Or maybe you did, 'cause Dan's referring to something that might have been in your packet.
He's referring to what you handed out to me last...
Oh, you mean the pictures, just pictures of other similar signage throughout the county, okay. So what we're really talking about right now, this is the text for this sign. And we can get into other issues about the design of it and the color of it and things like that. But we really mainly wanna revisit this issue in text itself first.
Yeah, we, we all didn't see it, 'cause we have the Water Tower Committee that reviewed it and that's who brought back the recommendation.
Now, we were part of that Water Tower Committee originally, that we didn't actually get consulted about this change to the text until I showed up the last meeting and it was handed to me. But as I said, my impression then was that it was a done deal and that you had already seen both versions and just decided that you preferred this newer version. And so it seems as though we had no recourse at that point.
Yeah, no. We didn't see that.
Okay. All right, well, that explains that much at least. Now, as I say, there's some of these other issues concerning the color, which you alluded to, the aluminum versus the black and gold. That is something that could be considered separately from the text itself. And I think both sides really agreed on this revised Ohio-style sign from CUOS Studios because that was what the city administrator was also utilizing.
The big issue is with the text, not necessarily the sign or the color of the sign.
Well, the color is something that could be considered separately maybe as a topic. But the main issue right now really is more the text. Now, we've got a, that version of the text, if all of you wanna take a look at it currently.
Well, we fire up the committee to get together then. I'd like to see the text and like, bring, be brought back next meeting. Like the text and I'd like to see if what is actually got some historic value to it.
Well, this text has been vetted over a long period of time by the Dodge County Historical Society utilizing the models of the National Park Service and Minnesota Historical Society. So that's why we thought it deserved another hearing if it never really got a chance to be seen and studied by the members of the city council.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to see both versions, I guess. And like, there's gonna be another meeting. I don't know what it is. But I would like to sit in the background. If I won't say anything, but I'd like to sit in the background.
I would just like to see a solution so we don't have to have this on our agenda after the next meeting ever again. Um, it's a really big waste of time of our city resources and your resources. I mean, so if the Water Tower Committee can get together with the historic, come back with a recommendation of the council that can just be a recommendation and be done.
I'm fine.
We spend way too much time, um, anyway, not only with that. So if our group, Water Tower Committee, gets with the Historic Society, meets together, gets something. That way, everybody comes in with the recommendation that both sides say, hey, this is what we recommend. We take it up to action and we're done.
I'm good with that.
Everybody good with that?
Yeah.
You guys good with that?
I guess we will.
You good in the next two weeks?
I should ask our treasurer here. She's representing the organization.
She could, yes, Linda.
I would like to explain at some point to the council how we came up with the text we did.
I believe you. You guys are professionals that... You can do that next meeting. You're very professional in historical stuff. You know your stuff. I believe you 100% of that. So if you guys can all get together, communicate clearly and together and bring back one recommendation that everybody agrees on. I would love that.
So you wanna see really one consensus text as opposed to two versions?
Yeah, yeah. So otherwise, if one side comes back next time and says, we like this, and everybody like this, now we're making, I, I can't make that decision. I'm not a historical person at all.
I understand.
I'm only 49 years old. That's all the history I have. And you guys can all get together on that and determine what you want together so that I can say, sounds good, 'cause both sides like it, I'll vote for that.
Well, that's the way you should work. You should get completed staff work.
And I shouldn't, yeah. I'm not gonna make the decision on what text should be, so.
All right, sounds good.
Sounds good. I'll go out myself. Thank you very much.
Onto G, new business, canvas for 2018 municipal election results.
All the canvassing in material was in your package. Uh, it had the number of persons registered at 7:00 AM, the number that registered on election day, the number of accepted military, regular overseas ballot, total number of persons voting, and then it's got all of the numbers by precinct, by person, by person by precinct. So I can answer any questions that you have on it. Otherwise, I just have a form to sign and I send this to the county when I go on Friday for the county canvassing.
Any questions for Linda? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the results of the 2018 municipal election.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, McCoy. You have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pull the same side. Motion carries unanimously. Thanks, Linda. Appreciate it. Uh, G2, that was Doug. You had moved the minutes on the consent agenda, item E, number three.
Yeah. Uh, I've brought this up before. I just agree on how it was written. And there are several people here who were at the meeting. Anyway, I was attending the meeting and I was, uh, Tom Ferris asked something about... I forget how it all started. They were talking a little bit about if you were to recuse yourself from something and what the facts were and everything. And I was sitting in the back row and all of a sudden Tom asked me if I went through this process. Ahead of it was a sub motor truck and this and that. And, uh, well, it was about a three-part question and I did say, you know, would I answer them if you answered one at a time? No, yeah, no, but beside the point. I never said that I recused myself from anything there. And it's written there that I did. This had been two years before that. I'm a subcontractor for someone that subcontracted, blacked out on that job. There was no reason for me to be recusing myself there. It stated that. I tried to go that over that with Linda and she left it in there like that. And I've, I've watched it over and over and I don't have myself saying that at all, so.
So the last line there where it says Mr. Buck stated that he did and is a second, do you want that changed that did not?
Yeah.
The Planning Commission approved these minutes.
Okay.
And in, at the October meeting when Councilman Buck was there and stated the same thing to the Planning Commission, they had approved the minutes, but he said he wanted it on the record. So you haven't seen it yet because those are in the October minutes that have not been approved by the Planning Commission yet. But it does state in there in the October one that Mr. Buck wanted it on the record that he did. So those minutes you just haven't seen yet.
Okay.
Yeah, I haven't seen them either, so I just...
Well, no, we haven't approved them at Planning Commission, so.
I wasn't gonna approve them here either. That isn't the way it came down. But something about all the dirt, well, no, I have no dirt. But I have a truck there. Yeah, there's a truck there. And so that's what I mean. There's about three different things in there real quick. I get it on the, on the tape. You pretty much hear me say, yeah, to the question. But there was more. And I'm sitting over there. I didn't pick up very good, you know, so it isn't what I meant.
Like a three-part question. I agree with you.
Yeah, yeah. So like I say, if I had to answer them, I would've said, no, gap, no, but so.
So we'll get that corrected with the next set of minutes that we get.
Okay.
Well, it'll be on, in the Planning Commission October minutes that they did, that they approved it. But Mr. Buck stated and wanted it on the record. So that is in the October Planning Commission minutes.
Okay.
Good, Doug?
No, there was one other... No, there was one other part in here too. It was on the part when, uh, they're going over a bunch of stuff with revocation of conditional new permit for adjacent workers. And, uh, it says there that this Matt voided, uh, a law is the law and applies to everyone, he does not believe the commission. Well, I didn't take it that way at all. He, he was talking to one person at that time. He stood up there and said he served in Iraq, a couple of things and does an investigation, he can read people and he pointed to one person and said that he wasn't telling the truth and that he was lying. And I just wanted to bring that to light with Mr. Zalinski.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Administrator's report?
So, it's that time again when the League of Minnesota Cities offers the, actually, a new and experienced officials conference. So, I have reached out to the two incoming council members to find out from them if they'd like to attend and I'm working with them on that. And I also wanted to ask if the experienced officials wanted to attend that conference again, February 1st and 2nd in Plymouth.
What's the deadline set then, I'm trying to get my calendar.
I don't think there's a deadline, I, you could pretty much show up and I'll let them see which charges for it.
I'd be interested.
For the first and second.
Yeah.
I'm interested, I'll have to double check.
Okay, all right.
Friday, Saturday. Friday, starting on the 30th.
Kind of true, happy.
Thanks, Teresa.
You're welcome.
Onto the engineer's report.
And I just want to state for the record that I gave the engineer a little hard time last time about not coming up with some funds here and there and then he emails me with joy a day later and I'll let him go into why he was ruminating open. So, I just wanted to let him know we have an outstanding, outstanding city engineer and he does a fine job.
Like eating crow?
Call it what you like. You just needed some motivation, see, the next day a million dollars shoulder.
No apologies.
It was already in the mail, though. And I was pretty biggy though.
I'll stand up for it, so.
No apologies needed, but I just definitely had to poke some fun because it was, like you said, a couple days before we were awarded. And that is item number one. Ultimately, I'm happy to announce that we did receive funding for 16th Street Northeast. That's the upgrading from the current gravel road kind of at the end of the pavement by Public Works there, going to the East Dodge County 15, which is a pretty important segment of roadway that we've seen through our comprehensive planning process and regional transportation planning through the Highway 14 corridors. So, that grant is for a million dollars of MINDOT money coming to the city. There's a local match that ultimately needs to come from the city of about $600,000, what we have budgeted right now. That local match can come from our MSAS funds. And if you remember what our MSAS funds are, that's money that we're already receiving, it's money I'll call it in the bank that's waiting for us to spend on projects. We currently have about a million dollars in there waiting to be spent through that program and that money can be used for that $600,000 match. That's currently what I understand the direction staff would be going for that local match. So, ultimately, the conclusion would be there'd be minimal capital investment from the city directly from currently city funds. We're looking at it, might be none up to maybe $50,000. So, the assumption there is when we get to that point, if there is needed, that we work with Nancy to figure out how we're funding it. So, that, that grant is awarded. We told MINDOT in our initial application, a year ago, we'd build it 2019. So, I asked them if we need to build in 2019 or we can wait till 2020. They said they'd like us to build it as soon as possible, we could fall back to 2020 if needed. So, with that said, I would be looking for some direction on the schedule of this project and I also have an engineering agreement in your council packet for your consideration to move forward on the design. From my perspective, if we're going to go on 2019, I need to get going and we need to get it in kind of our queue to get it designed up, so that it started whatnot, so. So, yeah, with that said, the information, the other information is in the council packet. I think the big one is the engineering agreement to kind of kick things off and get things rolling on our side of things for construction in 2019 or 2020.
Well, you can swing 2019, that'd be better, yeah, because it's only going to go more expensive by 2020.
Yeah.
Plus, you're going to be tearing up 57 in 2021 and the sooner you get this done, the easier it's going to be to get.
So, again, we can proceed to 2018 next year.
If you're looking for a motion, I'll make a motion.
I'll second it. Before we can do that.
I'm just saying.
No, before we can do that, though, we have to know, we have the million dollars from the state. We have our MSAS dollars, they're $600,000. My conversations with Nancy, there's some spillover that we can't use MSAS dollars for.
Not, not yet. You're right, your MSAS dollars are capped. We may or may not ever hit, if we don't spend that $600,000 on this project, we may or may not hit that cap and I could do some things to avoid that cap. But I mean, the question for you, the council, is that money, again, is a million dollars in the bank waiting to be spent on a MSAS project. This qualifies for that match where you can use the $600,000 for this project. The question for you is, is that the best use of the dollars? I think it is. Obviously, we secured a million dollars. You could leave that money in the MSAS bank and provide other funding for the $600,000. That's a choice you can, you can make and we would want to make tonight.
Okay. I still want to commit this to something, saying that all of a sudden, we're going to set our budget here in a month and I don't want to have to ship something, a hundred grand that we can't get from somewhere we know we committed in the project and we need to come up with it without.
And that's the zero to $50,000 I talked about with Nancy.
Okay, tell us the number.
Yeah, the $50,000 is what we'll probably just put in the budget.
Okay.
So that you can finish it 2019, I think that's what we were thinking of.
Okay, all right.
So, it looks like the preliminary numbers, your scope there, you're a little under 10%?
I think it's 12%.
160, weren't you 150 something?
Yeah, 10%.
It wasn't, man. Don't prove to me.
Okay, all right, I'm on board with that, all right. Dan, do you have a motion to?
I'll make the motion that we approve this and.
To be in 2019.
2019 and use the MSAS money and the million dollar.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Propose same side, motion carries unanimously. Thanks, Brandon, appreciate that, I'll try and comment. And then we added, number two. Number two, yeah, proposal with Dodge County, yeah.
So, number two is in your council packet, that is a figure of the fairgrounds area there. Ultimately, there's two things with this figure that myself and staff are going to bring to the county fair board and the county commissioners at some point. Ultimately, it's two easements and the first one is for a trail section that is kind of in the northeast part of the fairgrounds there, behind the racetrack in between the horse arena there. That's kind of what staff and the fair board and the school call the goat trail. And that's a trail that has been used recently significantly from students. We put in our Safe Republic School Program that is going to be built in 2022. So, we ultimately need an easement in order for us to construct that on the fairgrounds facility. So, it's an easement that we're going to be asking the fair board and the county to grant the city to construct that facility. That's item number one in the proposal that we're going to bring forward. The second one is kind of the blue and red area there in the southeast corner of the fairgrounds. If you may remember, council, we, a few years ago, did a report on your water system and the conclusion was is that we're nearing the capacity of our water towers and we're going to need to build another water tower. And essentially, the recommendation is to replace the current water tower that's just south of the fairgrounds there with a new larger water tower that meets our needs and our growth. So, what we're going to be proposing to the, to the fair board here is a 250 by 200-foot easement within the fairgrounds, so essentially moving that water tower to the north and building out fairgrounds property within that easement. Obviously, it's going to encumber the fairgrounds to some extent, so what is the give that the city is going to bring forward to the fairgrounds and that's going to be that blue line running to the west there. And what that represents is a water main that we would extend into the fairgrounds property and set it a fire hydrant and then also a new water service into their office facility there along kind of the grandstands of the racetrack. We would be proposing to construct that at city cost in the, with getting the full easement to replace our water tower onto their property. Secondly, another benefit from the city there is some service lines that we're going to disconnect and they're going to reconfigure their water system. Currently, the fairgrounds area there is unmetered. If you remember even farther back, the DNR, who regulates your water system, is not real keen on unmetered services, so we would in turn provide a serviced, or excuse me, a metered service to the fairgrounds. So, that's another benefit that the city and the fairgrounds would both reap. With that said, we would retain, after we take down the water tower site, we would retain ownership of that parcel that we currently have there, which is kind of the southeast entrance to the fairgrounds. And we're also proposing to replace the entrance to the fairgrounds off of Fifth Avenue there. We feel it's probably a better spot for that entrance. Those are some details that we'll have to work out with the fair board, they may have some objections to that and bring some stuff forward. So, maybe the conclusion is utility easement, there's going to, there's going to be some cost involved to provide this, this metered service to the fairgrounds. But when we start talking about cost of acquiring other sites, I think it's, and they said it's best interest to pursue this option with the fair board. We've talked about it with staff level at the fair board and county administrator and they were generally receptive of the proposal, but obviously we got to bring it, bring it forward to the fair board and the county commissioners.
And what got us to this point, it was going to cost us how many dollars to paint that and get it up to snuff anyways?
Yeah, that, that was.
That's what got us really looking up to the tower.
Yep, that was the conclusion of the short little report that we had a few years ago was, we have two issues under water towers. One, we need a bigger one, so we could put up a third one, we had the other one at the CHS facility there along with the fairgrounds tower here. But if the fairgrounds tower is also easement, needs to be painted, well, it's pretty costly to paint a water tower, so we're kind of killing two birds with one stone here by taking down that tower, deferring that maintenance, not painting it and then putting up a larger tower that will be considerably larger than the one that's currently.
And we will be taking it down, it won't become another historic water tower.
Possibility we could bring that forward.
Great idea, Brandon.
Rent it all for her, for her tower.
It's coming down. Maybe put that seat out there.
And then it would be a nice lot, but that's a shitty house.
Couldn't help myself, Brandon.
Probably information that the current historic water tower is actually not full of water. It's maybe that'd be something that the public knows, but it's actually full of sand.
Yes, it's a desert, it's not. Okay.
So, with that said, I, I guess maybe a, understanding that staff is going to be bringing this forward to the county commissioners and the county fair board for their approval and then we'll come back to the council in form of execution of a utility easement and a trail easement for these two improvements.
Makes sense to me. Because we're going to go buy land and delocation.
Win-win.
I want to entertain a motion to approve the proposal with Dodge County.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Dan, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thanks, Lonnie, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same side, motion carries unanimously, Linda. And now, number three. Yeah, item number three is not in your council packet, it was handed out before the meeting here. It's a letter here from the HGS, ultimately, that is repair request number 14. We approved the 13 other ones of these. I wanted to not bring the consent over there, so I could update you on the schedule. Before we do, the, the resolution will be ultimately paid it to SL contract for the 2017 street assessment project to $592,773.95. With that said, I wanted to update you on the schedule, it's been a little bit of rainy fall, early winter here, so we're having trouble doing the last kind of some touch on our property with respect to sodding. So, there's a possibility that we don't get some yards sotted this year because we can't physically cut the sod or it's going to maybe be too wet here in the coming days to place that sod. So, if that's the case, we've had, asked the contractor, the contractor has proposed to hydro mow those yards if they're not sodded and come back in the spring and hydro, or sod them in the spring. So, that's currently what we're looking at if we do run up to that. So, maybe a possibility, so I just wanted to update you on the schedule.
It looked pretty promising a week ago.
It did, it did, so it's been a little cold, obviously, so. With that said, I would ask for your consideration of the ferry request number 14, SL contract. entertain a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Cory, I'll second. Thanks, Cory, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same side, motion carries unanimously.
And that is it?
Thank you.
Thanks, Brandon, appreciate it.
Item K, personnel, hire full-time officer recommendation.
Did I miss?
I didn't see it anywhere.
Yeah, I don't have anything about that.
It was not.
What?
J, there you go, that one.
Uh-oh. K. K1?
Yes, on that. Let me see it.
Oh.
I J, yeah.
It's not, is it?
Uh-uh.
Uh-uh.
I can wing it.
You've got a copy of your letter, you want to just have a copy of your letter and you can.
Yeah, they can see that. And also, that stuff.
Yeah, it's all, it's all there. Yep, okay.
Is item L going to take us a very long time?
Shouldn't.
Can we skip ahead to that while she's doing that? Chief. Sure. Let's go ahead to attorneys.
If you will recall, the city has entered into a purchase agreement for the sale of the lots adjacent to ShopCo. That agreement did have a contingency that required the buyer to obtain access to his satisfaction from ShopCo by October 1st of 2018 or the purchase agreement is considered void. So, that date, it does say right in the contract, that date can be extended by mutual agreement of the parties. So, I am looking from some direction from the council about that date and perhaps reaching out to the buyer and asking them where they're at. Are you looking for an extension? Thought.
Ron stopped by my office today and I was busy, but he left a message with my assistant Julie that want to let me know that he's on the final stages with MINDOT for the right of way of some water or something.
Right.
You'll have that and he's hoping to have it very soon and as soon as he gets that, he's ready to go.
Okay.
So, I would say that, I would just, can we just leave it open-ended to what? I've talked to the phone a couple of times before that, his intention is as soon as he can get MINDOT to give him something in writing, he's good to go.
Because he's got his access on the south side, though.
Yeah, the easement for water or something drainage.
Yeah, I know he'll be working on there too, but.
So, I guess I would make the motion that we extend the date to be open-ended as of right now until he gets his approval. It sounds like he's ready to go, he just, MINDOT just doesn't move as fast as we want to. So, I would make that motion.
How far, you want to just say maybe till December or January?
Or days?
I would just say.
Well, when was the first date supposed to be?
October 1st, so we're 45 half of that. December 31st.
Given there are 90 days, I'll make a motion to extend it 90 days from today.
From today.
I'll second that one.
And we'll deal with it 90 days, but he should have something 90 days.
Okay.
Do we have a first and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same side.
Do you want me to communicate that to his representative and say?
Yeah, we got it at 90 days from now and if we have to do it again, we can revisit again, but.
He's not going to walk away, he's got to come in.
He's ready to go.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Anything else?
Nope, that's all I have.
All right.
Your backup, Ken?
We have the recommendation for the full-time officer. Any questions? I'm sorry you have such a short time to brief it, but. Just one second, let you. Here.
Don't you intend on just switching now, he's got a full-time here, a part-time for the county?
Well, that's a good question.
Oh, I wondered who you were, I should have.
Ask him directly.
Probably, right?
He just had a, a new baby, so maybe he could use a little extra.
I don't think it makes any difference, I just see you hold that there.
Any questions for the chief specifically or the candidate? That's most of them on the spot. What the heck, see if he works under pressure, I know he does, so I think he can handle it. I can hear you smiling.
Yeah, he's been a little good now.
He's a good public person and that's what we're looking for, so.
And this, I mean, obviously, we're replacing another full-time person. This is not the addition, so this is all in the budget. Matt Norland's here today. He's taken over Gary's position at the first of the year. Okay. Anybody who has not met him, this is Matt Norland.
Matt.
And his fiancee. I'm sorry.
This is the one that you were wanting to put into the budget for two thousand and nineteen?
Correct. Yeah, and this all fits, Nancy, within the budget that we have proposed that we look at and should remember.
Yeah, starting January.
Part of the levy that we've already, the preliminary. The preliminary levy.
That's a preliminary.
Preliminary, yep, okay. Any other questions?
Nope.
I think it's good. Do we need a motion on this?
Yes, yes.
So would it be a contingent motion based on the budget being approved? Because we really can't... Been Matt accepting the... Right, he has to accept it, but I mean, we have to do it because if we don't approve the budget.
Yeah, if you continue it on the two...
I'll make the motion to add Matt as a full-time officer starting January first, assuming that the budget is approved the same as the preliminary budget.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same side. Thank you, Jerry, the council. Thank you. Nice to see you here instead of a matter of... Phil wrote you with a smiley face. He did. He smiled. He told me I didn't use mid-term signal. I thought I...
So you're pretty mad.
Oh, we're mad. He doesn't remember, though.
That's why he's been smiling about it. That's that guy. So he was someone.
Okay. Correspondents? Questions there? I want to entertain a motion for adjournment.
I just wanted to... They had the numbers in there for the... What was pumped for water and what they treated. They didn't look into it. They treated plenty of bad water, but we did have a lot of rain. I don't know what they were on time.
Bring your time. I'll circle back on staff on that and just kind of see what they were. It's hard to correlate numbers and pumping depending on...
Treated thirty-five point something gallon in September.
How many?
Thirty-five point seven gallons.
Yeah.
Four point eight was from a man.
They pumped half of that, right?
Fifteen, yep.
That's, I mean, that's...
Is that a lot? Not half, under half.
Yeah, but that's worse. Because what you pumped is, and then you got that much more running, that means you got that much ionized fuel coming from someone. But then they did say that they pumped a couple of manholes over there, very good.
Yeah. We're scheduled... Oh, we have exposed up to, so. Do I have a second?
Second.
Who made the most?
Cory. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Have a good Thanksgiving. I ain't going to be out of town for the next five days, so... Just for that.